Businesses to the employee hearing for employee termination at this point.
Okay, you want me, okay.
We'll do the pledge afterwards.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to move into executive session under for personnel under one DSA three thirteen eight.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
So, so for everybody's information, that was recorded. I'm gonna turn the recording off now.
Okay.
Okay, for everybody's benefit, this is recording.
I'm gonna try to make a motion that we accept the plant, the town manager's recommendation.
There a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No. Alright, we will start our regular meeting at. And we start on buzzer. Thank you. Amendments to the agenda. None tonight. Who else? Move all the minutes of April twenty first.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes April twenty first as written.
deletions corrections. Oh, I need to. Thank you. deletions correction. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five minutes for public comment. No public, no public comments? The. You're, I don't believe you're on the agenda, so yeah.
That is worked out for DPW.
Okay.
You guys like saying about that?
We support as the town managers. Department head reports.
I put the month report in your box for review. I had eleven arrests for the month. I also put a copy of a letter I did mail out today of fifteen residents in the property owner trailer park. If anybody saw that, it was just a draft that we're going to start looking at some junk coordinates. I've got complaints, junk coordinates. I put a draft that I sent to everybody. I mailed it to everybody that had good property and sorry property, just to put the trailer park unnoticed. At some point in the future, once COVID relaxes, that we start looking at that and do a follow up.
This is airport?
Yes. So I was just trying to, if you pull in there, literally a junkyard on both sides, all the way down through. And it was sent to every, every trailer that occupies every tenant and the property owner itself. But at some point, we're gonna start. So maybe they could start thinking about maybe removing some of the cars and some junk prior to us having to do that. I gotta put a letter, the copy of the letter. I just took the names off it. It might be down in your box here if you didn't.
I didn't even go down.
So if somebody, somebody came to you and had questions, what's this? I want you guys to see the same letter that I drafted and sent today.
Use the precedent we used on First Avenue, First Street.
Yeah, we would do the same process that we did down there. And I did put in the letter that it's the book, the town school, his compliance, trying to make a healthier. Environment down there, but cleaner, healthier, safer. And again, let's try to become compassionate and understand that you can't push hard, but we need to nudge that in the direction of trying to make that a much nicer place.
Welcome to hanging around. Town manager.
Just a few things. Despite having the virus slowdown, we are moving forward with a few projects in town. The fuel tank closure was released and the fuel tank install RFP was released. We've got a, those are due on the fifteenth and the board will get their, their first look at it. Oh, yeah, that calendar is not right. So the fifteenth is a Friday, but following Tuesday, the board will get a first look at the RFPs and proposals to that, those jobs. Water and sewer budget is in. Those are with the board now. I talked to Wayne Elliott about the rates for that loan payback, the bond payback. I have it all and we can talk about it, probably talk about it later, but I have the entire payment on consumption, the usage for a thousand gallons. He recommended putting that on the base rate, just because he was concerned about fluctuations in use. So that's coming.
I think just most of the bond banks and everything always want, want it that way. I meant to say that the other day when you showed me that, but because it's consistent.
Yeah, but you know, when I did that, I thought, well, it's fair if it's on the usage, because people who use more pay more, people who use less pay less. But yeah, it's, it's not typically like that, I guess.
Is, is there, is there actually a correlation between that? Do you, do we believe that people will actually conserve if you put that on enough to matter if you put it on the consumption side?
I, so I'm gonna be honest, I don't think people, I don't think the bill deters people at all. But that's my opinion. I don't have any, any hard numbers for that. I think what the real concern was is now with coronavirus coming in, businesses are gonna be using less, people will be spending more. People will be spending less. So folks like McDonald's and Shaw's and restaurants won't have the water consumption.
So you're going on the fact that we're not gonna get anything toward, we're going, you're gonna make the users pay the entire shot on this.
Well, that's the way it is now, but the board has final say on what they want to do.
I was just gonna say the final shot on, help me.
For okay in a budget. If you're doing the budget, this is, this is what's in the budget for this year for, for income, correct?
Yes.
So, I mean. I disagree. I think something should be put on the tax rate if we don't get this.
Absolutely. I'm, there's no, when I read that, I, I'm with you. I'm saying there is no way that we should be paying for that.
We don't have to have it this year, correct?
No, not this year. Next, not this fiscal year, the following fiscal year is when you need the money.
Right.
Yeah.
So this is, this would show what it would be, but we don't have to do that this year. And we still have the, the local option.
I still want discussions on the option tax, but, but also it's good that we're saving and I wanna see the numbers. But our water and sewer are too high now. Anything that raises them, I think we should be discussing.
We shall.
And we should be getting into where the general tax starts paying for some of that and not just the handful of use. But that's.
I think we're pretty much in agreement. That's just how we do it.
Okay. No interest in a revolving loan. Is that the revolving loan fund?
Do you know why? Is it too much?
Too much application? Yeah, I mean, we had seven to ten people say, put me in.
Yep. I, I had, it was at least ten people plus one more, one more person I sent to two who didn't ask, but they were just concerned about what was going on. I don't know, but I'll, I'll reach out and see.
I think you need to. Yeah, well, what? I mean, I don't know. It didn't seem that complicated to me, but I, and, and I don't know what people would expect. There has to be some, there has to be some sort of transparency that we can go back on, that we can see how we did if somebody wanted to question it. So. You know, I mean.
I was, I was surprised.
Bureaucracy is bureaucracy, but there's sometimes there's a need for it.
Oh. Paving, the Pike did wanna start paving this week. We did have to push it out to June. The, the budget just cannot support adding tens of thousands of dollars to it at this point. Oh, on that note though, so we are coming down to the end of the budgets, the fiscal year. Something I'm working on, something I need to improve is my, my PO process. Things do kind of slip through the cracks sometimes and we're tightening up our PO, our PO procedure right now. I've already let folks know that it's, it's, we're moving towards zero tolerance. Things aren't gonna be bought before it comes in front of me, which is the way it should be.
If Jenny's listening, Jenny's listening, get her stamp out that says no PO.
She's not listening, but Rod showed up. So hey, Rod.
How you doing, guys?
How you doing?
If, if we pushed paving to June, do you anticipate any increase in price or savings from our bid price? Based on, I think there was a mover in the contract, right, on fuel price?
There was. If it is, it should be minimal. It's, it's only like one, what, one month off, May, June.
Does pushing it out put it risk getting it done before COVID, I mean, we're gonna get it completed?
We'll get it done. The, the contract is between June fifteenth and September, I think September first. So.
Okay.
We're well within our rights to push it back.
That's, in, in that term, with all the stuff going on Washington Street now, are we, are we burying those manholes or are we flushing them out?
You're burying most of them.
Really?
That was, is that the way they're built or is that the way?
From my experience in highway department, they all should be lifted to finish right at the blacktop.
Yeah.
But we do not have the material for one to do it. The material for that. I don't mean to speak out too much here, but that's material for that project should have been bought months ago. So that's set down at our bar, ready for us to do it. We got some manholes that were ordered today that fingers are crossed they'll be here tomorrow. If not tomorrow. Maybe the following day, Friday, Thursday. The downside to it is talking to Mike today from State Project, they'll be grinding down through their, they'll be down through their midday tomorrow.
Really?
Yeah, so they will be blacktopbing before we're prepared to. Even think about what the manhole. Yeah, we're down there working now and doing the ones we can, but that was a poor, poor judgment of someone's partner to have that stuff here.
If they're grinding, you're only gonna put on the same amount of mix that they're grinding on. They're grinding an inch and a half, they're gonna put an inch and a half back on. So the, what, if the manholes aren't covered now, they shouldn't be covered afterwards.
The manholes are covered now. Jack, I remember you cut them all day today.
Why can't we just put our lips on them?
Because that, that's the problem actually. They're twenty-three inch manholes and they do not make a lip for twenty-three inch manholes, which is why they're, the ones that we can are being changed out to twenty-six inch manholes. Because they had those. So later down the road, you know.
Just because they're old or?
Yes, because they're old.
Wonderful. So those will be, those will be buried.
They'll be buried.
They're gonna do the same thing they've always done. They've always had to dig them every, every year. I know, it's terrible. I know, but I mean, it's not going to anywhere so it was before. No, no, I'm just saying that just so if we could rectify that, it'd be nice, but.
Right, but every time, you know, you cut in the blacktop or, you know, you chisel away, you just create a hole that you go away every year, you know?
It was tradition to bury those for forever in this town. I never understood that, but. Tradition of burying them everywhere. Really? I don't know. Palmas didn't hit them. That's why they covered them. They didn't cover them with an inch of. Okay, I thought it was just us.
The same problem with manhole covers for the streets that we're gonna be paving later, so that we need to go out and order like we're doing on.
Once again, working for Highway Department.
If we're pushing our eight hours a day like we're assumed to be, we should have them ready and done by June, providing we can get the materials of the manholes. Providing that we can get our hands on those. Providing we have the one inch to purchase them.
See what you can do, Joe, to juggle that. That, that seems to be important.
Yeah, I, I talked with Nate yesterday or this morning. Yeah, he's gonna get the parts. That's something we can't. The budget's gonna go over, but that's not something we can just not do. They're gonna have to be set, or it's not a waste of money, but we wanna do the project correctly. Oh, and on a positive note, if you saw the mayor, he was in the paper today, he's raising money for the playground still. Last Linda Barker told me was she raised seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. So we're chipping away at that. That's really all I have for you.
Questions, comments for the town manager? Whole business is, the first thing on the agenda is a local option tax.
Yeah, so Bob and I did have a, we had a phone call with Vermont Tax Department. Their figure was, was a little bit lower than my original figure. They said one fifty-one, almost one fifty-two. I said one fifty-seven. So we were a few thousand off. They did go back though and re, rejiggered their numbers for next year based on the coronavirus pandemic. Taxes, local option tax revenue is estimated to come down to a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars for next year. This doesn't count, I'm, I'm gonna say Amazon, but all mail order products that are taxed at the one percent, that number doesn't include that. So it, it may be a little higher.
Was that accurate what you, I thought you were gonna be checking out the Amazon stuff that shipped your home. Was that, did she say it was, that was right?
Yes, what they do, which, what they do is it gets, it gets billed, the, the state pays, they, the state collects, oh, all the money that comes to the, to the. All the packages come to the state, the state collects it quarterly. What they do then is they split it out by zip code. Which means it's a little difficult for us, because I think Benson or West Haven has the same zip code. So we have, have to do one more. Benson too. And so, but they'll, they understand that. They, they're aware that that happens. And they will make that adjustment too, and we will get money from, from the state that way. What was the, oh, the other one that was a little more encouraging to me is, for instance, the. Car sales are not taxed because they get sales news tax. They don't tax that. So that makes me feel a little bit better. It still lays on retail and. Yeah, not clothing, but other retail and, and bars and, and restaurants. It's a little less onerous the way it was described the other day. No matter what we do, you know, I, I'm starting to become a more performer than that than taking it out of the general fund.
I'd rather. Even though there's some people, my only question, we ran some numbers last fall and when we did a hundred and fifty, we based it on making a hundred and fifty-seven thousand. And if the one percent option tax and it looked like we'd be paying thirty-four sixty-five. And, and the document that you sent out was with a hundred and fifty-two thousand bond repayment. And yeah, and, and maybe I'm reading it wrong, but it looked like at the bottom of that page, what's it, thirty-eight fifty? It looks like it went up instead of from the thirty-four sixty-five. Now, it could be we have better numbers or different things than I do. I, I might be, but I was looking at those numbers saying, oh gee, you just wanna.
So the, the one fifty-two is the actual, well, the, the actual payment is like one fifty-one, seven hundred. The state estimate of local option tax is the one twenty-three. And that's a sheet that was sitting on the table when, when it came out, it looked like that.
Okay.
Again, we were, my, my number was a little high, theirs was lower than mine, but I mean, it wasn't off too far. I was glad to hear that they have somebody that can help us. I didn't realize they had statisticians that can do this. So, but yeah, a hundred and twenty-three thousand from, from local options, counting any mail order taxes that you do collect. It'll be close to paying that whole boss payment.
So it'll be close to wash, we can read things.
Yep.
And, and that would be best of all worlds for me without asking, because I think the tax figures, when you get down to school, that's, are gonna.
That being said, if we wanted to, we have an election coming up in November. There's, the, the school has to have an election somehow before June thirtieth.
No, uh, no, I talked.
Using last year's budget.
Yep.
Yeah, I talked to the school today and they said the same thing, so.
I mean, I can understand that, but it's, that's just kind of hoisting, that's just kicking it down the road, as they say.
Okay, so yeah, we can, I talked to Suzanne about, sorry. We, I talked to Suzanne and she said all we need to do is get her language. We can put it on the mail.
Do we have to warn a meeting and?
Yeah.
Cause, cause I know there's a certain number of tax figures out there that, that aren't sure they support the one percent option tax and would rather. Would rather see the general, the general fund be taxed or whatever. So we gotta have an opportunity for them to talk to us and.
Any, if, there's any vote like that that's happening.
Information.
Yeah, so if the board wants, we can, we could get the ball, ball rolling now, get the language together through the state, make sure they're happy with it and prep for November.
That would be good. And then when the legislature goes back in January, they could immediately start that, their process. Or unless they're gonna do it before then.
According to the.
I haven't had my hair cut in a while, so I.
I'll get the, the info from him.
Um, my, my, if I could just put in my, it's, it's an opinion, but looking down the road. If the local option tax is implemented with the pandemic that went through. When businesses start to fail, I could see this being the cause. People will automatically blame a one percent tax on, on business failure. Well, I could just, it's just what will happen. I remember when that one percent came in, businesses failed.
Don't be a pessimist.
Again, my opinion.
Aren't we still two years out before you even see the. The cost after you do the project and then when, or are we looking to start paying for it early to buy it down?
If we got the budget, if we got the, if we wrote the, the. The bowl, if we wrote it properly to say it's designated for that, then we could put that money and we could actually put that as reserve account until. I don't know which one it is. I never get those two straight, but we could do that. Yeah, we did that in the last, in the water project. We, we actually raised, raised the water rate ahead of schedule. To start paying that back or to have that money ready to pay back. We could, we could do it. But it's kind of a long drawn out process. So just, just so you get some worrying together and we can put it on next, next time. Next time's agenda and that'll give people a chance to speak out the first time against it if they want to. And we could vote on it then. That'd be specified. It's a, it's a dollar on a hundred dollars. Yeah, I know. It's not like it's gonna break anybody. The more, the more I think about it, the more I, I'm starting to be more in favor than I was.
The, the other nice thing about it is it grabs, grabs funding from an outside source.
Yeah.
Right, it's not just your taxpayers that are even funding.
That's true.
It's some of it. Some of it comes locally, but a lot of it, you know, like to pick on mobile, there's a number of people coming through town. That will, will be grabbed there for a little bit of money.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get a, we'll get a couple bucks off Dave Mallory over the years. Which is worth it. So we'll, we'll do that and we'll, we'll. Do the official vote, if that's what everybody wants to do. Consent to the board.
I'll get some language for next game.
Thank you. If we get it ahead of time, that would be good too.
Yes.
Mutual aid agreement.
Rockland Regional.
Yep. So this is the young lady presented a few weeks back about the mutual aid. The, I think the thing to, about this is that we're not required to send aid to anybody. We can, we can send or not send is based on our own needs. But the Rockland Regional is, they're just the vehicle for this agreement. They're, they don't have any, really take any part in it. It's just town to town, we'll help each other.
I think that's something we should make on our own. If we wanna help somebody, we'll do it. I don't think we should be told by the Rockland Regional.
We're not.
They're going to, they're gonna call you and tell you where they need to go. They're gonna say, yes, they will tell us that Jay, but they're not, we're not bound, read it. We're not bound to. Read it. You're right. This is as bad as the highway safety program. We're in, we're in, we are responsible for everything. We're responsible for the insurance, we're responsible for anything that goes on. But if our equipment breaks down out there on somebody else's job, that's our nickel. But it's our volunteer. We would, we're the ones that would do it. We, we would. I'm totally against it. I don't. Benson needs help and they wanna, we wanna go help them, fine. That's the way it should be. But as far as having that group in Rockland town, I disagree.
They're not telling, the way I read it, they're not telling us we have to do anything. As a matter of fact, we have one, we select two people. In most towns, it's the town manager and the chair of the select board. And they, they have some names for them, the official aiding, the aiding official and the requesting official. And that's how you control the fact that unless you have agreement from the town that says, yes, we're gonna do it, nothing gets done. What is, what this does though is if we do, cause I think if Wes, if Benson got in trouble and they, they had some disaster and they needed some help. It allows us to get, it's a lot smoother to get reimbursed. It's, it's.
I, I like. The only way you're gonna get reimbursed is the people you're there files toward FEMA.
No.
Yes, you're not getting paid from the people you're helping. Read it through.
The way I read, the way I read through the document, you get to go in and, and say this is what it's gonna cost.
You could file with FEMA and, and bill your time for if you weren't.
Part of asking for the help is filling out the document saying this, that we anticipate it's this much gas, it's this many hours and salary and everything, before you even make the decision.
I think it makes it easier. I think for FEMA, it makes it easier for them, because they have a. I think it makes it easier, I think for FEMA, it makes it easier for them, because they have a, a coordinating entity that they can go and say, what happened here, what happened there, but I don't think, they're not forcing, nobody gets forced to do anything from what I read.
We put somebody out there that works with town of Fairhaven, and they get hurt on a job, it's our responsibility. If someone do something wrong, do damage to somebody's property, Fairhaven is gonna get sued, not the town that's there working. I disagree with, wholeheartedly, I disagree with that, again, it's just my opinion, but.
I think lightning not supporting this is like when someone throws you a life ring and you throw it back and say, I'd rather drown.
Why hasn't Pauline and Castleton done it? Because they feel the same way, why are they gonna put their equipment, why are they gonna put their equipment out? Getting it abused and broken and whatever, and then have to re, then you have to turn around and fix it.
I, I think we've got people in Pauline and Castleton that probably have, have this, I'm just care about me and they're not looking at what's the bigger picture. But I, I think this, not, not supporting, this goes hand in hand with our, it goes right with our emergency, our local emergency management plan having, having this mutual aid agreement for emergency.
You're setting the town up for liability.
Oh, setting the town up for success, instead of holding it back in the past, that's, that's the problem.
We're not gonna keep repeating ourselves, we, I, I hear what the argument is. What's, what's the, the?
But we owe, the bottom line, we, yeah, I'll, see now, I've had most of the emotion in this. The bo, the bottom line on this one right here, we had, we had a person come, which I think, by the way, we didn't treat them very well. It sat over there and we kinda took it all over her in her proposal. But we said, within a couple of weeks, we get you an answer, and it's been a long time, we owe them an answer. So I'd like to make the motion that we accept the mutual, are we signed the mutual aid agreement? For the Rockland Regional Planning Commission.
You need a second?
Uh, hang on, man.
You need a second in order to have the discussion.
Okay, I'll, I'll second it.
Discussion, more discussion.
Is this, I can't remember, is this an annual thing, is it for the end of time?
Until you, till we pull out.
No, this is, the term of this agreement shall be one year, cause I actually read, I actually read the document and, and highlighted it, it just, this agreement shall be in effect for one year, sign-in date divided by the municipal. So in other words, if, if you're worse here, you think we went down the wrong road, next year, when it comes up again, we can say, boy, that was something, Glenn didn't know what the heck he was talking about, that was something we shouldn't do again, then we don't do it. But when I, when I look at what we have and what you're committing to, and the fact that we do nothing unless the people that's part of this agreement here is saying, we, we identify two, two people that take those two roles in this process of the aiding official and the requesting official. Unless we say, yes, we want to do it, it doesn't happen.
I read through it also, too, and there's a section in here, and I put a little thing on here. So what if there's no funds available, town goes out and does all this work, who picks up the tab, town for you?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's really intelligent, that's gonna help our budgets, isn't it?
Again, this is looking at a disaster and a mutual aid of helping your neighbor and looking beyond the border of the, the lines here, hey.
I think you're thinking Irene kind of thing, it's not, it's not, uh, you know, they need an extra couple of digits in town or something. Big picture thing, not a, a little thing, they're not gonna ask if someone wants this necessarily.
It's, it's not the same, but the hospital worked closely with them during Irene, and they were of great benefit financially to the hospital for that.
I think it's just a simpler conduit to get your money.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Everybody understand the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Jeff, Jeff.
Did you say, are you again?
You eyeing?
I'm an eye, yep.
All right.
Every place the equipment has to start working for people, start thinking about what it costs.
I, I'm, by voting for that, I don't think we've sent any equipment to work for anybody, have we?
No.
Yeah, they can't force us to do that. More, I, well, anyway, we've already made, no need to waste time on it. Emergency man, management plan update.
Yeah, so this is our annual, uh, plan update. Actually, I think we're gonna, if it's okay with the board, can we table this?
All right, with everybody?
I, I wanna make sure all the numbers and names are correct in here now.
I have a, I do have a question about this. When did we se- separate the superintendent and the foreman in the highway department?
What page are you on, Jack?
I was gonna ask about this, too, because, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, that title is wrong, Nate's the.
Why is there two people, why is it separate?
Um, so from my understanding, Jack was the foreman, is that what his name, yeah.
So when I was town manager and restructured the, with board approval, restructured the highway, um, department. And it was offered Jack to step out of his position, um, with the town forward at the, at the time, and so Jack was set, the foreman position was created for Jack. And then the top was when Jack retired and that position would go away, he'd go back to having labor. That was just a five-year window, so there is no foreman position at this point.
Yeah, if the board can table that, I'll change some names and titles.
The other thing, the other thing I was thinking of, there's, um, no, no, um, mention of, of the select board, which is the governing body, so. Unbelievable, we're all, we're all listening, we're. Well, not on any of these E O C positions and duties or.
And there's also, there's another shelter, too, that, that Castleton Legion, Catherine Castleton has a FEMA generator over there also, that's a, consider it a. We're in here somewhere, cause I saw it all.
Yeah, you guys are up page eight. Get that far back.
Yeah.
This municipal government contact, seven and eight.
I'll make a motion to table this one.
All right, and that's what we will do. Is there a second?
Just while we.
A second.
We're gonna table the emergency plan, is there a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Okay, wastewater plant upgrade loan approval.
So this is the wastewater facility upgrade loan, this is, let me make sure, this is from. USDA, uh, the board needs to vote to accept this, the loan resolution, and, and Mr. Richards is obligated to sign it. The, the loan is for three million seven hundred and twenty thousand, and the grant is for two million six hundred and fifty-eight, two million six hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
What's the interest rate, it was pretty good, wasn't it?
One point eight.
So are you looking for a motion? Cause I'm looking at a motion that we saw, we approved the dollar amounts that you just said, three million seven hundred and twenty.
Yeah.
I caught the first, I didn't catch the second.
It's the loan resolution.
The loan resolution. I'll make a motion that we accept the wastewater plant upgrade loan resolution.
Well, the highlights are that that's pretty well maxed out at grant, the grant money we can get.
Yeah, they, they were, they did reduce our interest rate, um, but they then, they reduced the grant funding by two hundred thousand as well. The, I know. Both Wayne and I called USDA about it and they said, well, that's what it is. Thanks, USDA, um, but the payment stays the same, there's no increase in payment.
Everybody understand what we're doing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Unanimous, that's good. Hey, moving on to new business.
I got, I got one more.
Oh, damn.
Yeah, this is the state, Vermont State Revolving Loan Fund for three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars. The state is loaning us this money, it's kind of a bridge, bridge fund. Um, once the USDA loan is passed, the grant and loan is finalized, that grant loan will pay the state fund off, distinct loan off. Does that make sense?
That's not additional money, that's just.
It, it, it's bridge, there's just bridging the gap for right now. Yeah, I need a motion for the Vermont State Revolving Loan Fund.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Vermont State Revolving Loan Fund.
There's a second?
Second.
Wait for it.
Oh, I didn't have those more to it, it's gotta be a second.
Close enough for government work, is that say? Everybody understand what we're doing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
So there's, there's three spots, one spot is just for Bob and the back two are for the rest of the board to sign as well.
I'll catch up with you, Joe, when I do the minute.
All right, thank you, Jeff. And Bob, this is, remember to pack a document, just a music, they sent a revised copy. I just need your signature.
My sign.
On the bottom, just in the highlight there, you saw, that's that one where there was no space to sign.
Still isn't. Go for you. Uh, okay. Sure, nice hand, Reggie. I'll move on, coin drop discussion.
So the, the board postponed the discussion until today, and Seal, hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
I can. And I guess we're, we're back, the last time we left, it was a discussion of if the board should allow, uh, coin drops at all this year.
Isn't everything else on hold? Still?
Yeah.
There's nothing else moving forward that we want. But we talked about having it in July, I guess, no, August, September, October?
I think we should table it all, table all the coin drops until out there the mountains back up and see which, where we stand. Cause if we, if we give permission for somebody to have a coin drop, and everything hasn't been opened yet, him on the street and gonna create a problem, and I think. I think we wait until things have been opened up in the state, so we know it's gonna be all right for people to get together. If you need that, and I'm motion to table.
I'll, I'll second that motion, I can keep them alive, but we don't.
I, I'm just saying that, I think.
Is there any value in, um, I see the little yellow slips of paper still sitting here, is there any value in in choosing who they will be, so that one person can know it's not gonna happen here yet? The others will remain.
We could do, we could pick the people that, if we do have them.
Yeah.
They could do it, but.
Would that help, Seal?
Um, you know, because I'm involved in coin drops and the concerts and the Friday night events, um, I guess my concern is that I don't think any of them are gonna fly this summer. And I, especially, you know, concerts draw hundreds of people, and I don't see, um, you know, that being a safe option for us in particular circumstances we're in right now. Um, the same thing sort of with coin drops, I don't think there's any way I can stay six foot, six feet from somebody and take their money, you know, you know, in a bucket. Um, especially in the middle of the road that's now more narrow. So I guess I was just seeing if, what, you know, what the status was, so I could report back to, you know, the, the, my organization, but, um, I told them I'd be shocked if you let us do coin drops at all, so that's, that's my particular thought.
All right, so let's, so let's.
Put a cover on that and put it in there.
Tabled and definitely. Which will, um, cross one of my roundtable, uh.
What did she mean by road being narrower?
From the construction?
Yeah, that's what mine are saying, was, was construction. Seal, do you mean about the construction on West Street?
I, no, well, you know, where you can, there's only a little section, like, down from, um, uh, Stu, Shaw's? Because it's, you have to stay on, there's just a little narrow area, you can do our coin drop there. And that's where the, you know, they built the driveway into the new, uh, Rite Aid. So it's a little more narrow there than it used to be, we used to have a nice little place where we could, you know, there was some wiggle room. Um, but that, that narrowed a little. And yeah, there's gonna be construction on Twenty-Two A, but is that farther down?
No, it should be right there, that actually should be done by the time we're even thinking about trying to be done, not done by first of July, yeah.
Okay, yeah, but no, that's, that, that was our concern, because that's where they put the driveway to, uh, that's not Rite Aid, what is it, CBS or whatever? Right across the street from Shaw's, Walgreens. Uh, that's where the driveway is.
So we have a motion to table everything that we do, I don't think we voted on that. Let's go and vote on that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Dog fee, dog license fees.
Yeah, so the, the board approved the extension of, of not charging fees because of the pandemic. Uh, we're coming up on, uh, the expiration of that extension, um, and town clerk was wondering if we would like to extend again. My, my first thought was push it out till Jan, January first. Maybe that's too far, I don't know, it just, I'm just tossing that out there for discussion, but yeah, we.
Where, where do we extend it to?
Uh, June one?
I, I think it was June first.
June first.
What, are those, are those Fairhaven's fees, or are they, some portion goes to the state?
Uh, those are Fairhaven fees. Yeah, the state does have their own fee, but we can only deal with our own.
We, just their questioning.
What's the top?
What's the what?
What's the revenue generated from those fees in a given year? What's the revenue generated from those fees in a given year?
Let me check. Yeah, that's not a lot of money.
It was under a thousand, I think, Jeff. But the question with the opening up of different things that are going on, do we envision that by June, there might be the town office, we open with people with masks, be able to come in? And license their dogs. I'm I'm just, we're we're, you're talking many thousands there. They're starting to serve back there. And maybe it's July, but I'm so pushing licensing now. I I can't, it's not big money, but I'm just going, okay.
Suzanne said there's around two hundred that have registered and I think we've been averaging about four fifty, about two hundred and fifty people that have.
Right, about half to have it.
Yeah, we we budgeted for two thousand dollars in dog licenses, so then the fees would be.
I guess I I'd be tempted to just wait and see, give it another.
Push it out to the end of the fiscal year and see where we're at.
July one. July one.
For July one.
Consensus of the board?
Just July one, go back to July one.
Yep.
Highway financial plan.
Okay, this is the annual plan that we have to center the state. It shows all, it shows the cash we're spending on class one, two, and three roads, um as well as our winter maintenance, summer maintenance, and then paving. And this is also, which is new for us, the additional fifty thousand dollar article. This is the budget that we voted on or that the town voted on, right? And the board need to prove.
In motion to approve the highway financial plan?
Any discussion, questions? So the only change is the fifty thousand that we added. And our budget, our regular budget number. Our budget numbers are higher anyways.
Yeah, it's your, it's winter and summer with admin and mechanical added in there plus that fifty thousand dollars for paving.
Be okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
It is, it is starting to bother me. Jeff, when he sits there, he usually lets me have the towel. Don't you wait too long. At least the the other board members are a lot more subtle about it. Uh, you.
Liquor license?
Yeah, I got one here.
Yeah, so the if the board approved that liquor license last time, but Harold is the only one to sign it in the correct place, so.
Oh, everyone else.
Where we sign it?
Yeah, so if you guys would sign that for me, I would appreciate it.
Oh geez, okay, so we, there is a motion already on, so we just. Here, Carol, show us all around. Uh sewer budget, first review.
Yeah.
It's already changed, correct?
I guess, yeah. Well, no, the the numbers are the same. It's just where do you want to allocate the the payment to? And if you even want to put that bond payment into the budget.
That changes a number a lot.
It changes significantly.
So the sewer budget did. Did it stay the same? Go down?
Uh the sewer budget just uh just actually was without the hundred and fifty two thousand, it would have went down. The sewer fund, the sewer budget right now has had an increase of one hundred and twenty one thousand. If you take out that one hundred and fifty one, it comes down by, is that thirty thousand?
From last year.
From last year, it's a it's a decrease in.
Is that down mainly because you're not doing double coverage in this fiscal year?
Yeah, part of it, so Jim was shifted out of sewer, so part of it is his salary and part of it is his um uh benefits. We also had budgeted thirty thousand dollars for the new hire to come on board, so that money's not in there, so it it came down.
We should take a look at this with the new numbers, assuming that we're not gonna we're not going to do anything with the uh one hundred fifty one, one hundred, whatever it is. Re-look at this again. We're talking about stuff where it isn't real.
Do you want me to pull the bond number straight out of there, the whole thing?
I I I don't think we, we certainly don't have a probably what you should do is is just set it aside and show us what it looks like both ways.
True.
I had trouble, I had trouble seeing apples and apples. When I looked at this, I went, okay, I'm not sure, based on looking at last year.
Yeah, and then then we can look at that. There is a danger of being too optimistic on a on a.
Yeah, and I just wanna, like I said, I I just don't want to see everybody paying this higher rate if we don't have.
Right, and at this point, we don't have a mechanism to pay any other way.
Right, that's the only way we can do it, but if we're playing that, if we're looking at adding to the town budget, when we start doing budget. And that'll come in, that budget kicks in on July one of next year, we still have almost a year of picking up money toward toward, am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah, this budget starts July one.
July one.
And we don't have anything except except of the the repayers to however we do it, either base rate or usage, but we still, it it's all on them. It's really not necessary this year.
Well, that's the only thing I'm trying to say. I just feel that we should.
I agree.
It's, you know, they're gonna get, we're gonna get hammered the one way or the other. I mean, either it's gonna be hard hammered or we're gonna be in between. Because if we put money in the regular budget or in the town budget, and then if we get to one percent, you know, it might make a big difference on how everything's gonna shape up for the following year. That that's, I mean, we may, we may, maybe we want to even put it on, if we get to one percent, and they claim that's gonna be what, one hundred and fifty one thousand?
Oh, one twenty three.
Okay.
One twenty three now.
So we're looking at, we're looking at a thirty thousand or forty thousand dollar difference. Right, we're small. So if you decide to do say like the first year, you put, say like one, even one percent on the tax rate. If we didn't need it to fall on year, that could come off the tax rate. You know what I'm saying? I mean, it doesn't have to be a permanent percentage on that tax rate if we're getting the money through this one percent. And I mean, I'm not against the the basic rate going up a little bit, but I mean, what you're talking, it's it's gonna kill some people.
Sewer rate hasn't gone up.
No, no, so I'm talking about the the
The sewer.
The basic rate, it's gonna go to eight, what, sixty eight dollars, right?
At one point it was, but now if you did everything.
Yeah.
It was sixty six dollars and change, but the last figure was fifty four. But it's still.
Recall from sixteen.
Yeah.
Sixteen to fifty four. That's the only thing I'm saying, we, I don't want to see that happen.
Yep. I'll pull, I'll pull the numbers. I'll make two, I'll make two sheets like this, but the budget you'll see will not have. So that way you can see what it was last year, what it was this year, and then what it looks like in terms of payments with the bond in it.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're just gonna consensus it aboard, just on table this, because we don't need.
Yeah, we're we're not anywhere near that yet.
And how times the decision, because this goes in effect July first, it is time sensitive, that it has to be done before July first?
Yeah.
Well, this this budget is very, very.
I looked through some of this and it looks, it doesn't look bad. The only question I did have was if forty three thousand taken out, and then you just explained what that was. I thought that's what it was for in the sewer.
Yep.
And that's for the overlap in the change of positions and.
Yeah, staffing.
Uh the parking lot, anything, any updates or questions, folks?
Just just a question, the that Louis Lane ownership one here, folks, that I just wonder when it's gonna be put on to the, when people get back.
Yeah, I think Jake I'm sure is still in Florida.
With everything that's going on.
The more I think about it, the more I think we should not take it. I just think, you know, I mean, we can talk about it. I think the more you think about it, um that little, the the half circle, I think it's gonna be a pain in the neck. The straight in, straight out is fine, but if you take one part, you got to take it all.
I wonder if if they're connected. I mean, I don't know how that works. They're all Louis Lane?
I believe so.
Well, let's.
I mean, that's something we're gonna talk about later. But that, like I said, I just, I've had different feelings on it. I mean, we've got through the winter for the people and and uh, you know, do we want more headache? Do we want more? I mean, they're talking about trying to dump the apple tree onto us. I mean, I heard talk about that.
That's kinda, we'll see something.
Well, we we've had apple tree. Yeah, we, oh, no, no, you're right, you're right.
I really, we've never had to do apple tree. You know, that's just, I'm concerned, if we keep digging on these little streets, it's just more no hassle, more more whatever.
Why wouldn't we do it?
What's that? An apple tree? Been doing it before, they took it themselves.
I I'm trying and I I can tell you, there's more I don't know instead of talking roads and stuff, but every time I keep coming back to twenty six miles of road. We got a lot of equipment, paid good money for the equipment, the dump trucks, the plows, everything. We got twenty six miles of road.
But you want to go, the trouble is with apple tree, when there and there's only one coffee sack, the rest is dead end roads. You go straight in, there's a coffee sack at the end, but the side streets, there's nothing. It's parking lot.
Anything else?
Uh I don't have anything. We will, well, Adam Street Bridge, I will will apply for another grant, but it that's passed, it'll be next year.
How how'd you make out with uh Todd?
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, Todd Fur, thank you, Jeff. Todd sent an email back, says we can't do that. He uh, his engineer came and took a took a look and I can forward it to the board, but I guess the span is not long enough for for us to to get across that bridge and then put in footings, but I'll send the, I'll send the the engineer's information out. He explained it much better than what I just did.
Did he have any other alternative?
He did, uh, yeah, he said to put in a precast bridge and and he, yeah, and he gave three contractors that could do that for us.
Those are six hundred thousand dollars, because that's what our lowest, that's what the lowest thing here is, is the precast. Wonderful. Anything else? Wonder roundtable?
Okay, yeah, I got a couple of things. I, with everything that's going on, what's the chance of pushing our last, I mean, keep our last payment of taxes on the tenth, but moving the penalty to the thirtieth of May?
I think they've actually made some provisions for that in the state. I think there's there's actually, look it up, but I think they've they've done something.
I'm just saying, you know, a lot of people still pay their taxes, but I'm just saying, you get somebody that might not be able to pay the last quarter and you hit what, the eight percent on top, but you know, and right now, I think, I I'm just, it's just, I'm just throwing it out there. I I just give me a break, to give them a break, you know?
That's the only one that there is, the thirty day grace period.
Yeah, there's no water bill won't come out until July or June.
Yeah, we can, uh, let me look, but it is, the the board does have the prerogative to waive those fees through the abatement, so um if there's not one, there's a way to get around that and make sure people aren't overly penalized, so yes.
I I'm just thinking.
The six, right? So people would need to know like tomorrow or the next day, trying to scrape it together.
Yeah, why don't you want to do a motion?
I'll do a motion that if it's if it's legal, we can do it, put the penalty off until the thirty first of May.
You have a second?
A second.
You were gonna say something?
It's not so much getting it out there, but having having Bev and and Joe have the ability to not charge those interest fees when people come in and ask.
Yeah.
Well, they can't come in.
When they, when they.
They're worried about that.
Yeah.
So if they could, if it could get out. Like tomorrow, that would be.
Let me make sure it's legal, but if it is legal, then I'll let Bev know, we'll get the word out to, like, if you're thirty days late, don't, we're not gonna, we're not gonna ping for it.
And do, maybe do a first release.
Oh, that's a good idea.
I say you should do the thirty first, not the thirty day, the thirty, thirty first.
Oh, two May thirty first, yeah, okay.
That's what I meant, yeah. I don't, I didn't mean thirty day, I meant just to leave them.
You can put a little bit of. On website and Facebook page as well.
Did we go to all those in favor?
Aye.
Those who can.
Okay, what about the letter from the school board?
Oh my God, we did get a letter from the school board. Um I didn't bring it to you, I apologize. I do have it in my office, so I can give copies to the to the board. I can get it tonight.
The state, that he can work for us to town.
Clearly stated that they will be paying for uh Mr. Hunter's contract.
Say it was alright, produce the money for him to work.
And didn't say not to.
Well, I want to make sure.
We'll make it, we'll get a copy and we'll.
Because we don't need five officers here.
I agree.
And we don't, certainly don't need them working every day. And the only other thing, what's the status on the lakes and park? Yeah, I know you guys had a meeting or something about the name.
Uh, the the committee did. Um, we're still waiting on the state to get moving on their end. I sent them two emails and made one introductory phone call, but I still haven't heard back, so it's.
Are we going, before they can do anything, are we gonna have to have um come in, have them come in and check for lines in there and?
Yeah, we will have.
Say, man.
We'll have to have Dick say, but yeah, they're gonna have to do a whole study of the park.
The only other thing I was thinking about, there was a water line to that fountain. Right?
Yeah.
Cause the fountain used to run on wa- uh continuous flow of water. But I mean, I'm just.
It must have been.
Just.
We really had to cut off.
Yeah, we really had to try to make sure we find that, where that pipe is. I mean, it's gotta be deep enough where they're not gonna hit it with it. But it, but I mean, we should know where it is so they, the people know. There's one there and then there's one down to the other end. Down by the gazebo, there used to be a, that's right on the corner anyways, right on the.
There was, there was like a hydrant, right, Jay?
Yeah, it was, I can remember it was in a, they had a box full of hay and all that stuff.
Yeah, 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 that they did.
We used to do the pot, or they used to do the skating. It was a good site, when I mean, you could put a two inch line on.
That's.
I think that's, I think that's, oh, you said something about, they said that you weren't gonna pay for the the contract from the grade school?
The school did say they would not be following up with grade school, no, they don't have use for that that option.
That'd be about a thousand dollars, a full bill less. Just for the April, May, June.
Okay, I do have one more. Yes, Earl, when did he get promoted to being a captain of the church party?
I've been trying to hear it. I guess I see it.
I'm sorry, Jay.
When did the S R O get promoted to a captain of the trade?
Not a captain.
That's what it says in the report.
And I have a letter from the union from, what, years ago, that it's a, it's a non-usage recognized position and it can be whoever, and that, that will, um, basically means nothing, just he has these stripes on his shirt.
What's the truancy policy done?
Welfare checks, kids not doing homework, outreach, it's all been complained to everyone.
I'm just asking, it's on the report and I, and I just wanted to ask.
Everyone, I have a case documented for everything that he's been doing, like, so you can clearly see what he's been doing.
So they have to, if, if the kids aren't doing the homework, they notify and they have to go see him?
If they can't reach the parents and make contact, then they send the S R O up to make contact with students and to address issues with them. It's basically, he's the S R O in a school without laws is what's happening. So anyway, he was normally doing their truancy issues. They have him running, just doing errands back and forth and between that and the food program, he's primarily doing school stuff.
Jeff?
Yep. I just had two things for Joe. Park Place over on South Side and the end of Big Low Hill Road, I got two complaints, uh, that they've got a lot of potholes and need grading. If, if we get a guy out there on a grader.
What was, uh, what was wrong with Park Place? South Park Place?
Supposedly there was, no, no. Isn't it Park Place down by Whipple's Garage there?
No, that's Academy. Park Place is that little square.
It's before.
Where the Perrys live.
Yeah.
Sharon Drive. I know what he's talking about. He talking about a hole?
Yeah, he said a bottle.
Okay, it's just past Rear Road Track on, um, Pleasant, Pleasant Street.
Okay.
It's just before that little side street.
Pleasant Street Pothole near Railroad Track?
Just past Rear Road Tracks.
I think it's Park Place, but I don't know. That's.
Oh, yes. You know what I'm talking about?
Avenue maybe?
Can you take a look tomorrow for me?
And, uh, and then, uh, just talking about if, if we have a couple of open positions, should we talk about maybe changing the way we have our, our department heads structured? If we have a couple halls, we have, we don't have anybody as a sewer operator right now and maybe we could structure our department heads a little differently, if that, if there was any gain there.
Yeah, so, so DPW in the job description, it is required that they get their sewer and water license. I don't know if that matters to you. For the water, for, for sewer, does that have both? Yeah, that's, that's state requirement or?
That's totally fair to an appointment.
Doesn't make sense. Although I, I can understand they probably switch back and forth all the time.
It's a lot to do.
But, but we, we make the rules, right?
We make.
So to your point, Jeff, if, if you're saying now that'd be a good time to have a discussion of just because it's always done it that way, do we have a discussion? Is there a way we can work more efficiently?
And it works pretty well the way we have it. It's just that there's two open spots, so it's worth having a conversation now.
Yeah.
Do we look to put it on our, is it an agenda item or how, I don't know?
Put it on the agenda and if anybody's got suggestions, you know, shoot out an email. It sounds like you've been thinking about it a little bit, Jeff, so.
Little bit.
A little, it'd be nice to hear your thoughts and, and.
Yeah.
If you've got some ideas, Joe, please. And if you guys wanna put your head together, even better, but, yeah.
Do you have a, a employee chart with the structure?
Yeah, we have, we have a chart that explains every position, right? Oh, yeah, we have the script.
We have the script, but we don't have.
But you don't have.
Oh, we can make one. That would be easy. We have, you have one person not needing to be managed and then you have your water sewer department has their union position. So that's where it comes down, where they can't do, discipline, or say they can hire somebody up and turn it over to the town manager for discipline, but as far as being.
But the org chart would be good to have.
I, I would, I don't wanna make extra work, but I'd like to see it just because I don't know what it is.
I mean, we probably should have one anyway. I think like something that, yeah, that's, that's easy, that's fun.
If you had something made out of who answers to who, we wouldn't have this little problem. I mean, it'd have been easier.
Yeah.
But yeah, it is very obvious. I mean, what I'm saying is if, if everything comes down, this is sweet. Line, you know?
Yeah.
And, you know, modern. Modern, modern, thank you. Anything else, Jeff?
No, that's all I got.
Okay. Um, I've got the gravestone. I was just gonna, I was just thinking about that.
Yes, on Main Street.
Oh, if I.
No, it's, I picked it up. It's over here in front of, right in front of the door.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
It was the Saturday when I went by, it was still there. You must've got it today.
I went and grabbed it about three o'clock.
Yep.
It's been there since I came to town more than two years ago. I thought that's where it went. Nobody ever said anything.
There's a, a part of a gravestone, uh, West Street Cemetery has been in front of, uh, I was very concerned for two years, somebody stuck it in the ground, sold it there, so. Luluck has been after me forever to get that, so I'm glad. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I picked it up and I thought for sure somebody's gonna come out and yell at me, but no, no problem. I'll talk, I'll get it down and see where it's.
Yeah, he, he does know. He does know which, which stone it goes to. Town clerk, I had a request today. Somebody wants to do a title search, but their lawyer can't get in there. And I'm wondering if there's any way we can do some sort of appointment, social distancing. We're looking at, somebody wants to build a house. It's Al Brown, actually, wants to build a house. And he needs a title search and he can move on from there, but that's, uh, that's tax roll money.
Yeah.
And I don't know if there's a way that you go, you talk to Suzanne, see if there's some way that you can do it. Is, uh, I think he's, she's, I think he's using Comfort and, and Foley, so.
Okay.
Yeah, well, you know, you can't.
No. Uh, do you have a contact? If you give me a contact number, I can get, get in touch and.
I'll send it to you.
Thank you.
I thought we had enough records online that they could do that, do that online.
They go back almost forty years, so we can point them in that direction and. Yeah, that may, that may be the way to go. Yeah, Comfort is, is, I, I will give you a phone number. I don't have it with me.
But I would think one-on-one we could.
I'm surprised that Suzanne didn't tell him. Didn't tell him to try that, actually. Okay, uh, I was going to ask and I'll, I'll say it out loud just because I want those people to know that I tried. There was gonna be a request for, um, hobby sales at the south end of the park.
Oh, yes.
And that would, that would fit right into the, uh, into the coin drop kind of thing. And then it sounds like we're getting some feedback. So anyways, uh, that, that answers that question. And I got one more, which I have no idea how to answer this, except the Legion is gonna repave their, their parking lot. They were told by the contractor that one of the reasons it's so expensive is because of that sag where the water line goes through. And they're wondering if we had any, any involvement in that anymore. That was done in the early nineties, I, I think.
Yeah.
And I don't know what our liability would be or anything, but I said I would mention it. Um, so.
I don't think, I don't think it's, I mean, it's been twenty years.
I know, it's been.
And it just settled a year ago, right about a year ago. And if they want, if they question about things moving on that part of town, walk across the road to Mrs. White's driveway and her driveway will raise that much in the wintertime. So it's, I think, just the ground itself where it is and, you know, in the movement.
I, I don't know that.
So the.
We certainly can't go back on the contractor. At this point, but I just said I would mention it and I don't, if you could just look and see, maybe there's a state reg someplace that tells us that.
But that's.
So the Legion is.
Down, I believe that's state redwood.
I was gonna say, it's probably not Legion property. If we put a pipe there, it's must be redwood.
I believe it's state. You go from the center of the road there, I bet that's.
Well, probably true.
That's probably state, yeah.
Thank you for paving the redwood.
Yeah, well, that's the thing, I, and, uh, boy, okay.
Let me look into it, though. There may, maybe the state will give us something if we ask nice.
Well, you know, the state's there. Well, of course, I found out today they're only paving to the town line. They're only paving to, in front of my apartment house.
I saw that stake there today.
I said to the guy, today it was up there. I said, from there, it's the cemetery, that's the worst section of the road. Well, he said, I think they're coming back, but I'm not sure.
Oh, no, 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 no. That's not what they told us. They told us the bottom of the hill.
No, no, no. They're going from the bottom of the hill down to my apartment house.
Well, they're not coming from the state line?
No.
That's all.
So I don't know what's happened with this other project, cause that, that was part of the twenty-two week project, was the other end.
That was my original thought.
And they also asked.
Then I heard they started up here, I called by the flamingos. They say they started by the flamingos.
Yeah, and I also said, asked them why they're starting to grind in the middle of the hill instead of coming down to take care of where that manhole is. And he said, I don't know.
They're not coming down that part.
No, no. That's why I asked them, why they weren't coming. I said, that manhole should be, you know, they should grind from there up through. And he says, I don't know. I said, well, aren't you the engineer? Yeah. Well, why aren't you, why can't they go down another ten feet?
Why aren't they doing, when did this all happen?
That's, cause the guy was up there, he told me today. He said, I'm going to. When he stopped at the barn there a few weeks ago, there was talk of it and he told us then that they weren't coming down that manhole. Midway in that hill and going up.
Yeah.
There's a line across right in the middle of the hill.
Yeah, I saw that and then I saw the state. I just thought, I thought there was a great stake they were gonna, they were gonna do some stuff.
When they came in the survey, cause I was questioning the guys that were surveying, they're putting stakes in across my lawn. And he said, we're just surveying the town property where we're gonna be paving in the town. That's the only thing we're surveying. I said, what about the other end? Well, he said, I guess they're just gonna pave it. So I don't know. And they've, they've also got a line down here.
I saw that. Yeah, right down line. I wondered what that was.
Just this side of Shaw's.
The old, the old line.
Yeah, right, yeah. So, and then, so they're not gonna take care of that big dip that's down.
Well, they were.
Almost a max.
Well, they were supposed to do under the highway.
From the under, from the underpass where they had stopped last year.
Yeah.
Supposed to come from there down through. That was the original.
Yeah. Could you call the state?
Yeah, let me give them a call.
Cause I was amazed, because that's the worst part of that road down there, in front of your place and down through there.
Yeah.
So, but, back to the, back to the Legion, they're, they're paving their parking lot. It's their, it's their parking lot, but they do a lot for the town. I mean, we always do our votes there and whenever we have a, um, is there any way they could get in on our bid price?
That's what I told them to do. I told them to go to get, cause they only got one, they only got one contractor and he gave them a pretty good joke.
Well, sizable was the contractor, Will.
I'm not sure. I didn't ask, but I, I wasn't told. But I told them to call Pike. I said, they're here, they're gonna be here and it, it may make a difference. They don't have to move a lot of equipment around and everything. You may get a better price.
Yeah, no, I have to do it on the state or your son.
Right, right. So, but, yeah, I did, I did give them that much. Are they just shimcoating the?
This is just for my own information.
Yeah, I would imagine.
They're grinding it down.
No, they're just gonna, I imagine they're gonna put an inch and a half on it. They're gonna do just enough so you don't crack the stone. That's usually inch and a half. So anyways, I would think if they went and sealed that, it'd be plenty.
Me too, but.
That's because the payment itself, there's nothing on it.
No, the, the parking lot is not bad over there.
The only place that's bad is that one spot.
Yeah.
And they can then just pass shit.
Well, just see what, what our responsibility is first and foremost, if there is any in it. You're right, it's.
I think it's.
Take that right away.
I think that's a three yard or four yard.
That would be fifty feet, right?
Number three or four. Around sixteen and a half, right?
Okay, so four would be.
Fifty feet, sixty, twenty-five from center.
Okay. All right, uh, let's move on then. Uh, expenditure, Joe?
Yep. So, uh, motion to pay the payroll warrant, twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-three cents.
Second?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hello?
Those opposed?
You guys still there?
Yep, you're good.
Did he second or no?
Yeah, you're all set. We all voted. You didn't?
Sure did.
You were shade?
Somehow I missed the whole thing. All right, uh, general fund, seventy-five thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-one cents.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Got that one. And the checkbook balance is up to two million, twelve thousand, five hundred dollars and eighty-nine cents.
That's a lot of money. You wanna run that by me one more time?
Two million, twelve thousand, five hundred dollars and eighty-nine cents. Two zero one two.
School.
Yeah, he said a couple million, right?
We owe this.
That's cool.
Million, three hundred dollars or something.
We owe the school, two million, one hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. Uh, the bill came today.
And that's due when?
That's due the. After the next meet, it'll be in the next warn, uh, warning.
Yeah, we still got time to get more money in our checking account and get it back up. But the trouble is, now there's, this is for two quarters, right?
No, this is the whole.
Whole of the ban?
This is, yeah, this is all of it. This is all quarters.
So they never billed us at all through the year, so we could do a, a, a four in one.
I, I talked to her today. Um, why? She doesn't know and we don't know on this side why this didn't get pushed through. Normally it is, just happens automatically. For some reason this year, um, state payments, the, the state emails something in and then it gets paid off of that. Nobody seems to have a reason.
I would like to see that checked into, because this is quite a shot for us, that, that kind of money at the end of our fiscal.
Yeah, that was a question we had today. It's like, from the last meeting, it was like, well, there's all this money and there's all this, do what's going on.
No, we're, we're okay, though. I, I double checked with Jenny on that. She thought we'd be, we'd be fine.
It's, it'd be a lot easier for doing it every quarter.
Yeah.
Agreed, agreed. I just wanted to make sure we weren't gonna be short.
That being said, all the motions. Out of here.
Non-debatable.